Good evening. The Town of Las Gatos Joint Special Meeting of the Town Council and Planning Commission is called to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Stumpf?
Here.
Commissioner Rafferty?
Here.
Commissioner Sordi?
Here.
Commissioner Burnett?
Here.
Commissioner Barnett?
Here.
Vice Chair Birch?
Here.
Chair Thomas?
Here.
Councilmember Ista?
Here.
Councilmember Enni?
Here.
Councilmember Badami?
Here.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Here.
Mayor Huddis?
Here.
So this is a special meeting, and so first of all, verbal communications will be limited to the subject matter of this hearing. And the other thing is, I just wanted to introduce that we're doing this because we have quite a few development applications in front of us. And so about six months ago, I requested that we do a joint study session of the Planning Commission and the Council so that we could come to some common understanding. We will have the opportunity to ask questions tonight, and so I will call on people for their questions. And my head's going to be swiveling back and forth quite a bit, but I'll try to get to everyone, and I'll try to equally balance it with Planning Commissioners and Council Members. And so with that, I wanted to welcome Akoni Danielson and Shannon George from David J. Powers &amp; Associates. And so we will first do verbal communications. And so I have two cards, Karen Yamamoto, and then Captain Seuss.
I just have a quick question. I was looking for one of those packets. I only saw one out there, and I was wondering how I could get one because it's not available online. Yeah, I checked on the agenda, and I checked on in the extra material, and it's not there. So I was wondering how I could get a packet.
Okay, thank you. Captain Seuss.
This is a special meeting, and I looked when it came up Friday afternoon. Actually, I saw it Saturday because I was looking on it, and it did, you know, all of a sudden, the Planning Commission was in it. Planning Commissioners usually is stopped on it. But I was bringing up two things on the environmental things that came to mind, and I'm not a public speaker. But what I was thinking that this might be is like the House Speaker, Mike Johnson, you know, most threatening thing was seen about the Portland, naked Portland things, or they might migrate down here. You know, that is really scary if they're migrating. The Town Council has to put a stop to that because we don't want. Another thing is, I turned in this, which is about radioactive fallout from nuclear detention, and people died from this. This is more serious because CNN, you know, got really close. They have surveillance footage, and it doesn't make, the map shows it looked like you're coming into California. And it makes no sense that a stoner person that never had any public things and his family and stuff like that, saying this is an ice raid, but this, he posted this, which still doesn't make sense why he put a big giant poster up there, you know, and CNN, it was all blocked off somehow the camera view. If you get online, this will show you a camera view, and you can see that there are so many FBI agents and stuff like that out at CNN, you know, not, you know, is this drone warfare or something like that? So, you know, those are my two things, you know, radioactive nuclear fallout. I think it's affecting, I mean, I'd be normal, but I think it's affecting all of us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any more cards. So just an announcement that the YouTube streaming is not working, I don't think. So the only way to access this is on Zoom or in person. So let's get started, and I'd love to have ample time for questions from our Commissioners and Council Members.
I'd like to welcome David J. Powers &amp; Associates. They are providing CEQA training as a courtesy to the town, which is much appreciated. It's a, and we have this evening Akoni Danielson, the President of the firm, and Shannon George, Vice President and Principal. And so this is an excellent opportunity to get an overview of the California Environmental Quality Act. This will not be an opportunity to discuss individual projects because individual projects will have their own separately noticed public hearings in front of the Planning Commission and the Town Council. And I wanted to note that the firm is not currently working on any town planning projects and was not involved in the plan, in the town's environmental impact report that was prepared for the 2040 general plan. Thank you.
Thank you for having us, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council and Planning Commission. I'm going to apologize in advance. I know this is the Town of Las Gatos. I'm going to probably refer to you as a city. I'm going to apologize for that in advance. I've been doing this for almost 30 years, and I've worked in cities. I have cities as clients, and I'm going to do it more than once, so I apologize in advance. So just very quickly, as far as my background, I've been doing this for 29 years. I was a city planner in San Jose for the first 13 years of my career, and in that role, I had the good fortune of working for your former town manager, Lowell Privetti. She was on staff there when I was there, and I learned a great deal from her. And my role at the city was to serve as the city's CEQA administrator. So I was responsible for the city's implementation of CEQA, all of the city public projects, whether they were, you know, fire stations, libraries, roads, sports facilities, city hall, airport, whatever it was, went through my office. And then also all the private development applications, all of their CEQA review went through my office. So I did that for the last seven years I was at the city. And then the last 16 years, I've been with this private consulting company, David J. Powers &amp; Associates, we're based in San Jose, but we serve clients throughout the Bay Area. And so the last 16 years, I've been assisting cities, counties, school districts, special districts like the VTA on implementing the California Environmental Quality Act. And I'm going to turn it over to my associate, Shannon.
Good evening, everyone. Shannon George with David Powers &amp; Associates. I've been with the firm for 25 years. I've been doing this for almost 28, and I've only ever been a CEQA consultant, so I don't know any other life except this. I live it and breathe it. Couple of my favorite projects are Levi's Stadium, Santana Row. I'm sure you guys are familiar with a couple of those. So those are my claims to fame, and I'm very excited to be here and help you understand CEQA better. So thank you for having us.
So I do not have a laptop, so I'm going to be referring to my slides throughout, although I'm assuming most of you are going to be looking at the slides while I'm talking anyway. But so just as an overview, you know, we're going to cover a lot of topics. We have 46 slides, so we're going to try to move them quickly. But we do want to take breaks at different places to allow for questions, and the mayor is going to keep track of time and keep us on schedule. Let's see, so next one. Okay, so what is the California Environmental Quality Act? So as was noted, it was enacted in 1970. Governor Reagan signed it into law, and it applies to all public agencies in California. And there's about 10,000 of them that are subject to this law. And so basically, all state agencies, local agencies, school districts, special districts like the VTA or the Water District are subject to CEQA. When they make decisions that result in physical changes to the environment, so that's the key criteria in there, is that the decision that they're making has to have a direct or reasonably foreseeable indirect effect on the environment. The Act is a creation of the state legislature, right? So it is something that can be modified by the legislature, and it has been over time. And in particular, there were some pretty significant changes this July that took effect, and we'll cover those in some later slides. The Act is also interpreted by the courts, so there's been 50 years of court interpretation. When it was first passed, it wasn't understood to apply to private activities. Like, there was a big case early on in its interpretation that said that, no, these, this law applies to public agency actions on private applications. That wasn't the initial understanding of it. And so there's been a five-year decade of precedent that gets established as the courts interpret the Act. Next. Okay, so what is the purpose? So the primary objectives established by the legislature in enacting the law are, first and foremost, to provide information to the decision-makers, so the council, the Planning Commission, whoever it is at the public agency that's going to be taking action on the project. The document, the analysis, is meant to inform your decision. Second, it's meant to facilitate public participation. So the communities, other cities, other agencies that would be affected by that project, the CEQA process facilitates their public participation so that they can make their views known, they can be armed with the information to appeal to the decision-maker to make the decision that they believe is the right one. It also facilitates inter-agency coordination. So when the town circulates a document, that can be reviewed by adjoining cities, the county in which you're located, or other agencies like the VTA or the Water District. In addition, the Act is intended to, the lead agency in implementing the Act is intended to determine whether a project's impacts represent a significant change or level of impact from the existing conditions. So the point is to understand what's out there now in the environment that's on or around a site, and then understand how the project would change it, measured against what's called the baseline. So we'll get into the baseline in some later slides. And then if impacts are considered significant, based upon whatever thresholds you apply, and we'll talk about thresholds in some later slides as well, the lead agency is supposed to look at ways to seek to avoid or reduce those effects or mitigate them when it's not possible to avoid or reduce them. And then lastly, if at the end of the process, the analysis, the agency finds there are certain effects that just can't be mitigated to a level that's considered acceptable, there's too much traffic, there's too much noise, it affects too many cultural resources, whatever the case may be, the decision-makers have to go on record and explain why they're proceeding with their project if that's their decision. And CEQA doesn't mandate that you approve or deny something, but it does say if you do approve something that has significant unavoidable effects, you have to explain why, you have to give your reason so that public can evaluate that. Okay, so this will lead into the, what I'm calling the genius of the Act, because I think it is kind of elegant. So the Act applies to all public agencies in California that make decisions that affect the environment. California is a huge state. I think it's on the order of something like 100 million acres. Let's think of all the different landscapes that exist in California. And so there are public agencies that make decisions every day that affect those different landscapes. And so the law is not tailored specifically to what should the Town of Las Gatos do for its jurisdiction or its environment. It's written to cover all public agencies. And so again, think of the coastal redwoods, think of the Sierra Mountains, think of the Central Valley vast agricultural fields or the central coast, right? There's so many environments across California, and the law applies to all of them. And so to me, what the genius of the Act is, is that it provides a framework for a public agency and the community that the public agency represents to identify what qualities of the environment matter to them. Again, there's different environmental qualities if you're on the coast redwoods, or if you're up in the mountains, or if you're in the Central Valley, right? Those are very different environments. And the communities that live in those areas can, through their elective representatives, through the general plan, express what qualities matter to them. And the CEQA process is the mechanism by which that gets evaluated. The information is out there, and the public can understand what effects are coming, and the decision can be made, and then the public can decide if they're satisfied with that decision and the representatives that made that decision. And so when you read a court decision where an EIR, environmental impact report's been invalidated by court, they'll either say the process wasn't followed correctly, or the document was insufficient as an informational document. They'll say something about the document was missing, didn't have the right baseline, didn't use the right thresholds, the impacts weren't clear. And what they'll say is that the public and the decision-makers were deprived of the information they were supposed to get under the Act to make the informed decision. So the court will set aside the agency's decision. The court doesn't say, you can't approve this, right? It just says, the information that you were required to have didn't exist. So it failed as an informational document. And then, as I mentioned before, the qualities that matter to the community, they can be described, depicted in maps or studies, and ultimately protected if they're deemed important. And again, the community can express those through the general plan or other long-range planning documents for that community. And then the CEQA process is the mechanism by which projects get evaluated against those expressed qualities of the community. Next slide.
Yeah, I got to hit you. Sorry.
Actually, let me, real quick on this one, just to use a quick example of how this plays out in practice. So a project, again, we're not working on anything currently with the town, right? We don't have an active project with you. But earlier this year, we were involved in the CEQA document for the La Rincana Country Club, right? They underwent a modernization, they took out a bunch of turf, they put in water-efficient landscaping, replaced some trees, and so that project qualified for a categorical exemption. That's one of the document types we'll talk about later. And so in writing that document and doing that analysis, we looked to see, how does the town regulate tree removal, right? Because the golf course, the country club's going to take out a bunch of trees. So we evaluated that project in terms of your framework for tree protection. It's in your municipal code, you have policies about it. Contrast that with another golf course we worked on a couple of years ago, very similar type of project. This was the Lake Merced Golf Course up in Daly City, private golf course. They were undergoing a very similar modernization. They were going to restore some historic fairway layouts and other things, but very similar project, also found exempt by the city of Daly City. But with respect to trees, very different process. The city of Daly City, in its municipal code, does not regulate the removal of trees and private property. They don't have a tree protection ordinance. So for purposes of our analysis, we mentioned, oh, there's probably 1,000 trees on that golf course. The project's taking out 110 of them. It's going to replace them at one-to-one, but that's what the golf course wanted to do. The city didn't have discretion. So for purposes of our exemption, we mentioned, okay, trees are coming out, but contrast that with Las Gatos, we did a tree survey. Every tree was documented, species, its condition, whether it was coming out or not. And at the end of the day, we evaluated, is this consistent with the town's tree protection policy? Because that's important to the town's framework for CEQA. And so again, two very different jurisdictions. But if Daly City wants to, if their community is concerned about tree removal, if they were concerned about this golf course, they could petition their government to enact tree protection policies and start regulating tree removal so that it exists for them, and the CEQA process would facilitate that if they decide that trees are of value to that community. So that's just an interesting example of how it plays out. So next slide. So discretion, I'm moving quickly here because we're going to get to our first break. Discretion, so this is fundamental to understanding the California Environmental Quality Act. Discretion means that the public agency has a choice to make, right? Public agency can decide whether to take the action or not, or the public agencies can decide to modify the application or not, right? So you have to have discretion, right? You have to have the ability to say no or to use the information that would come out of an environmental analysis to make changes to the project. So if you don't have discretion, then you're just, it's academic. You're documenting what's changing, but you're not influencing a decision, right? So discretion is fundamental, right? So first, discretion dictates whether the project is subject to CEQA at all, and I'll get into that a little bit in another slide. Discretion exists in what baseline you choose, right? And Shannon's going to cover some slides about different baselines that you can choose. Discretion comes in about whether you, what baseline, sorry, which threshold you use, right? CEQA does not say what level of noise you should consider significant. You get to decide that based upon your community, what's in your general plan, right? Downtown San Francisco is a very noisy environment compared to downtown Las Gatos. It would make no sense that the state would say, you have to use this standard, right? So that's a discretionary choice the lead agency makes about what threshold to use. The other point I would make is discretion's for the lead agency staff. Again, I used to be the lead agency staff in San Jose, and so it was my job to, on behalf of the city staff, the city administration, how to use the discretion that the Act provides, right? And so that's true for the town and its professional staff, right? You guys have staff whose job it is to oversee the CEQA process, right? They're responsible for implementing it on behalf of the city. We, as consultants, can help. We can give you advice, we can make recommendations, but it's not my call. I'm not in that role. And so the point I would make is that any lead agency should not defer to consultants. Again, we're giving you an opinion, this is what we've seen elsewhere, but ultimately, at the end of the day, it's the lead agency discretion to use. Again, just the definition of discretion under the guidelines is, the key question is whether the public agency can use its subjective judgment to decide whether and how to carry out or approve a project. So do you have the ability to influence, to say no at all, decide not to do it? So clearly, for any of your own activities, right? You're going to build a new fire station, you're going to acquire property for a park, you're going to widen a road, those are clearly discretionary, you deciding whether to do them at all. But for private applications, it's really fundamentally your town code, your general plan policies, your own regulatory framework that gives you discretion. And it varies from city to city. Like I just said, Daly City doesn't regulate tree removal. So for purposes of when we evaluate a project in Daly City, we'll note that there are trees there, but we don't spend time because they could come out tomorrow. So discretion really is fundamental. That's our first section. We take right.
Great, thank you. A very helpful overview. I suspect we're going to have more questions on some of the future sections. So if there's something that you feel you're not covering, you don't need to cover every single thing. Hopefully, there'll be some time at the end for you to come back and hit on anything you'd like. So are there any questions at this point? Councilmember Badami?
Thank you. I actually have a couple. So how do we qualify what's beneficial to the town? What's beneficial on page, I think it was four, when you look at the purpose of the Environmental Quality Act? It says, allow for the approval of beneficial projects. Beneficial might mean something to one commissioner, to a different council member. So that's one question. And the other question is, how do we balance discretion with the Housing Accountability Act?
Yeah, so those are two things. So the first one, beneficial in the sense of, what it was meant there was that, again, CEQA doesn't say that you can't approve something that has significant effects, right? It just says you have to go on record about why the benefits of that project outweigh the effects. So again, it's, the point being, you know, sometimes the most, you know, green, sustainable development will still come at the expense of some environmental consequences, right? There's virtually no project out there that doesn't have some effects. But the law allows you to balance those impacts against the benefits of the project, and you go on record as the council, as the decision-makers, why the benefits of the project outweigh those impacts. And there are slides that follow about that in the statement, it's called Statement of Will of Writing Considerations when you're reviewing a project under an EIR. And the second one about the Housing Accountability Act, again, that's a legal question, right? So that's something that the town attorney would advise you on what state law mandates you do, what state law limits in terms of your discretion versus what discretion you have. So there might be certain things about a project that's invoking state density bonus or other laws that do curtail your discretion, and that will play itself out through the CEQA process. There may be certain things you just simply can't say no to or regulate in a meaningful way, in which case I would say, well, then, there's probably not a lot of point in talking about them in the CEQA document, because if you are circumscribed by state law, then again, it's kind of academic. But again, to me, that's the effect of, this is again, one state law saying you need to study environmental effects, another state law saying housing's a priority. So those are two state laws that are giving you competing, conflicting direction, and that's what your attorney's for.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, town attorney.
Any other questions on this section? Yes. Oh, yes.
I mean, I just wanted to follow up with, at the end of the day, CEQA is an informational document, and so at the end of the day, the decision-makers have to know whether or not they have enough information. And so you don't need to approve a CEQA document if you feel like you don't have enough information.
Thank you. Commissioner Barnett?
And my question is, how do we differentiate an discretionary decision versus an arbitrary decision?
I mean, discretionary means that under your town code, right, you have, you know, zoning code, right? It identifies, you know, certain districts, allows certain types of uses, sometimes by rights, sometimes by a conditional use permit or some other type of permit, right? So that's a discretionary planning permit is typically subject to CEQA, right? Arbitrary means the grounds for your decision are not clear, but I'm assuming that in all of the permits that the city issue, that town, I did it once, sorry, that the town issues, there are findings you need to make, right? So I'm assuming that in your municipal code, town code, that there are certain requirements that the director or the city manager or who are the council, whoever's issuing the permit, they have to make findings to justify their approval. So to me, that would not be arbitrary because you've met the substantial evidences in the record that the findings have been made versus just arbitrary, like, oh, it's arbitrary. Well, I like this applicant, I feel sympathetic to them, let's prove it, right? I'm assuming that, again, there's a discipline in your approval process that things are not arbitrary.
Thank you, that's very helpful.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to the next section then.
Okay, I'm about to hand this over to Shannon because I feel like we talked a lot.
Yeah, he's almost done.
Yeah, okay. So project description, again, what is a project in CEQA? I said before, right, it's a case where a public agency has discretion about an action that either the public agency is going to take or somebody's applied for a permit or entitlement, and they have discretion and it would affect the environment, right? So again, there has to be physical change to the environment, right? There has to be either a direct or reasonably indirect physical change to the environment, and we could talk about that. You have to have discretion about whether you can deny it or not, or modify it based upon the environmental information that you have, right? Those are the two key things. It's critical to understand the change resulting from the project, right? So what will the project do? Is it removing trees? Is it demolishing buildings? Is it grading a hillside? Is it altering the hydrology of the site, right? So what is the, what physical change will the project undertake? And then, again, direct and reasonably foreseeable indirect effects. Again, direct effects are pretty simple. They're on the site. Again, you're removing existing features, or when it's there, it's going to operate in a certain way, it's going to be noisy, or it's going to emit pollution, whatever the case. Indirect effects are a little bit trickier. So like, what are examples of that? Indirect effects, there could be indirect economic effects of a project. So like, there's been a series of cases over the years involving Walmart supercenters, right? Big home improvement stores that get located on the outskirts of small towns. So clearly, the Walmart on that site, that's a direct effect of building that Walmart. Indirectly, some argue, the economics of that local economy change, and the Walmart starts to deprive the economics of the downtown. And over time, that downtown becomes starved, and the businesses close, and the prop founders start maintaining them, and you start getting blight. Again, that's an argument that you sometimes see for a big home improvement store. That's an indirect effect where this project over here, because of something it's doing to the local economy, is affecting in a physical way deterioration of the storefronts in a downtown somewhere. So that's an example of an indirect effect. Or maybe a roadway project is coming in, and it's deferring traffic around the downtown. So we're there, of course, again, the road itself is going to be very much direct footprint effects, but the effect of moving the traffic out of that downtown starved of the economic resources to sustain it, the indirect effect. The project description also includes the construction activity, right? So is it going to be, you know, an eight-month construction window or an eight-year construction window? Are they wanting to construct on weekends and evenings 24/7 or not? Are they using, you know, particularly heavy equipment or pile driving, right? So the construction activity is very much part of the project description, right? And then obviously, the operation. Again, City of Santa Clara wants to build a football stadium, how noisy is it going to be, right? Is it going to affect the operations of the adjacent airport that flies around it?
Yes.
Right? So operation is, you know, what most people focus on, I would say, in terms of the effects of a project, but the construction's also a key part of it. And I'm handing it over.
There we go. Okay, let's talk about the baseline a little bit. The baseline is critical to any CEQA analysis because it's the point in time where you start your comparison of what's existing and what's proposed and what the impact is, the net effect of that. Most often, it's the existing condition. It doesn't always have to be, there's some discretion there, but it's the condition that occurs typically when you start the initial study or when the notice of preparation is released for the EIR. That freezes that point in time, and that's your baseline. You can't keep chasing it over time, no matter how long the process takes. That's a really critical point. So you freeze it at the start of the process. As I said, there's discretion to choose an alternative baseline. You can do a past baseline or a future baseline. It really depends on the project. Most private development, it's going to be the existing condition at the time that the, you know, application's filed, the CEQA process starts. But there are certain types of projects where it's warranted to look into the future because it's, you know, has such a long horizon year, or into the past because maybe the site isn't functioning as it has historically, maybe for just a year or two, and you would want to, you know, really look at it as it could be, not as it currently is in its depressed state. And it's really critical to understand the change resulting in the project. So that's why the baseline is so important, because here's the baseline, here's the project, what's that net effect, right, of implementing the project? Another key concept we want to talk about is thresholds. These throw people a lot. They're the standard by which an impact is measured. You have to have some, something to measure it against, right, or it's not meaningful in any way. They should be specific to your jurisdiction, right? As Akoni alluded to, an urban environment is going to have very different thresholds or parameters of operation than a rural community would. This is one of the reasons why when they introduced VMT, it was so devastating to smaller communities, because it's not suited for smaller communities, it's punishing them because they're more rural, right? Whereas large cities, very much, you know, VMT was a good thing for them, as opposed to level of service. So often, the, an agency uses the appendix G, the checklist, in the CEQA guidelines as their thresholds instead of adopting their own. Each city or jurisdiction can adopt their own guidelines. It's our thresholds. It's a lot of work. You have to have substantive evidence to show why, especially your numeric thresholds are reasonable and supported. So a lot of jurisdictions don't do that. They rely on regulatory agencies like the Air District or Department Toxic Substances Control or something like that. But you can also pull from, you know, your general plan, your city code, your town code, I guess, I think. Sorry, I did it too. And they can come from outside of SEQA as well. So there's a variety of ways that you can derive your thresholds. You just have to make sure that they make sense for your jurisdiction and that they are supported by the evidence. So if someone challenges it, you can say, this is why we did it this way. There we go. Okay, so here's just a brief little visual for you. So you can see that we have the threshold line, right? The threshold of significance. And you have the proposed project. And it's exceeding that line. So if you're exceeding that threshold, this is why it's important you have to mitigate that, right? You got to get below the threshold. So very important to understand, you only have to mitigate to the threshold level. You never have to mitigate more than that. You just have to hit the threshold. You don't have to get substantially below it. Typically, we do. Once, you know, you start mitigating it, especially like construction air quality's a good example, right? It's, the threshold is 10 cancer cases per million for health risk. Once we apply mitigation, it usually drops down to like two or three, right? Even if it's maybe 11 or something at the beginning. But the goal is that line, that threshold line. That's all we're shooting for. And then you can say you're less than significant. But if you don't have that threshold line, then there's no meaningful way to determine whether or not you actually have an impact.
Okay. So this slide is targeted to, it's responding to some changes in SEQA that happened in 2018, right? So SB 743 was passed by the legislature and they did a couple of things. They got rid of level of service or vehicular delay as an impact under SEQA, right? They replaced it with VMT. And then they also said that the aesthetics effects of certain infill projects are less than significant by statute, right?
Sorry, real quick. We tend to use a lot of acronyms. If you don't know one, please raise your hand. I'm sorry if we're shooting past things and not defining them. So vehicle miles traveled is VMT.
Vehicle miles traveled, yes. So again, the legislature amended the law back in 2018. And these two topics were examples of how the law changed. But they're still of interest to the communities that are managing change and the public, right? So the public still cares about traffic congestion at intersections and how roadways function. The public still cares about aesthetics, how the visual character of communities will change. Under the, this law, this act, those are no longer effects on the environment anymore, right? So they're not something that we have to talk about in an EIR or an initial study. But they're still relevant under your own policy framework, right? Your general plan can still have level of service standards. Your general plan and your zoning code can still have design standards that you apply to projects. So these are things that, again, you can still regulate. You still have the ability to make decisions in light of them. They're just not topics that get run through the framework of SEQA anymore. We wouldn't require an EIR anymore because of vehicle delay. We wouldn't require an EIR anymore for a qualifying project under SB 743 if by statute, its aesthetics effects were considered less than significant. You can still talk about it on staff report. They could still be something that you evaluate according to your guidelines and other policies. But just, they won't determine the SEQA outcome for a project.
Right. Many jurisdictions that we work in, they still have a transportation policy that covers congestion. And we do, our traffic engineers analyze that as part of the overall analysis that they're doing. We pull out the VMT SEQA component and put that in our documents. And then the remainder of the report is there for the staff to utilize as part of the decision-making process. So you can still have it all. It's just not all SEQA.
Yeah. What is still relevant under SEQA for the transportation effects of a project? So again, if there's delay, let's say that it's going to really overload an intersection and the solution is to, you know, make more left-hand turns through the light. So if the solution is to, let's say, extend a left-hand turn pocket. And to do that, you'd need to take out 10 trees in the median. Well, then we would describe that those 10 trees are part of the effects of the project, right? So we would, we still, we still consider the vehicle delay in a project to the extent that it results in roadway improvements or off-site changes to the environment that we need to disclose as a related physical activity. So again, the example being, again, removing a bunch of street trees or maybe need to widen the road and you're going to have to relocate the bike lane or something or modify the bike design. And so that's what we would disclose as a part of the effect of the project. But the delay itself, that's a choice about whether are you accepting LOSE anywhere or not? That's your own choice. But it's not going to drive the SEQA process anymore.
Okay, let's talk about mitigation a little bit. So a mitigation measure can happen in a number of ways. It can completely avoid an impact. It can minimize an impact. It can rectify by repairing or rehabilitating. It can reduce or eliminate through preservation or maintenance actions, or it can compensate. Now, you got to be really careful about that last one because only under certain criteria does compensatory mitigation actually applies mitigation under SEQA. And your city attorney can get in, or town attorney can get into a lot more detail about that another time. But there is strict case law about when payment of fees can actually be considered mitigation under SEQA. And you have to be very careful about that. Yes, temperamental, okay. So what does mitigation need to be? It must be clearly stated. It must state the action or level of performance that's necessary to mitigate the impact. It may be quantitative or qualitative, depending on the threshold. Not all thresholds are quantified. And just because they are, doesn't make them better than a qualitative threshold. People like to see numbers. They like to see decimal points. Doesn't always mean that you're getting more substantive information. Like cultural resources, thank you. For quantitative thresholds, they must be objectively measurable, verifiable and enforceable. So you have to be able to measure the, you know, numerically measure the impact and the level of reduction of that impact with the mitigation. You have to clearly explain how the measure would mitigate, the conclusion of the effect after mitigation. This is something you may not always see in documents. It gets missed sometimes, but it's very important. When you have your conclusion after mitigation, it should tell you, especially if you have a numeric threshold, what's that new number after the mitigation is applied, right? Otherwise, how can you say that you've actually mitigated to less than significant if you don't know that number? If your threshold's 10 and it goes, your impact goes to eight, but you don't say that, there's no way to prove with your SEQA document that you've actually reduced to less than significant. Substantial evidence must be supported to determine that the measure will mitigate the impact. This is where your technical studies are so important on the really critical issues like air quality, noise and traffic. And this is critical. There must be a nexus between the mitigation and the identified impact. If there's no impact, you can't request mitigation to fix something that's a problem now. It has to be a problem caused by the project. If it's happening now, that's independent of the project that you're considering.
And real quick on that point, so that, again, not only, the nexus applies to, again, the scale of it, right? So nexus means rough proportionality and reasonable relationship, right? So like the old example, under the level of service before SB 743, right, was you couldn't make an individual project build a freeway interchange, right? That's just no nexus there, right? So there has to be rough proportionality and a reasonable relationship.
You stole my bullet point. As Zakoni stated, proportional to the size of the impact. This should go without saying, but it should be within the ability of the lead agency to implement it, right? You can't, going back to level of service, we used to kind of pretend sometimes that traffic stopped at the city line, right? Because you can't mitigate a traffic impact in somebody else's city. So you have to make sure that you can control the action. A really good way to ensure that the mitigation is done is to ensure that it's linked to permits. Any mitigation action should be linked to a permit action. That way, there's a fact-checking behind it to make sure that it's been done. Otherwise, you're just hoping that, you know, the developer is providing you the documentation necessary. But there's no necessarily a follow-up on that. Again, fees are only mitigation under certain circumstances. School impact fees are one that's accepted. It's state law, easy enough. Approved projects in a CIP. Those can be, payment of fees to those can be acceptable as well.
Their approval means, again, you've actually done SEQA and you voted to implement them, as opposed to them just being in your CIP. They have to have been something that you've said, we accept the environmental consequences of whatever this infrastructure is that we're going to ask you to pay for.
Mitigation cannot be to just do another study. And there's recent case law too that really hammers this home, that you can't just keep asking for more information. You have to have implementable mitigation. And mitigation cannot be deferred. You have to understand now what the outcome's going to be. Now, the actual action may happen at a later date, but you need to understand what's going to occur when that mitigation happens at the time that you're making the decision on the project. And because mitigation's so interesting, we're going to talk about it one more time. So for both an initial study, mitigated negative declaration and an EIR, we prepare what's called a mitigation monitoring and reporting program. And this is something that you should be receiving as part of your packet of information along with the actual environmental document. And it just lists out the mitigation, again, that you've already seen in the EIR or MND. But it also gives you how, it gives you the substance of it, right? It's going to tell you who the responsible parties are, what the action is, when it will occur, where the location is, right? It may not be on site. If you're mitigating biological resources, you may be mitigating off-site, right? Because there's nowhere on site to restore a wetland or something like that, right? So it's not always where, exactly where the action's happening. And then how the mitigation action will be implemented and verified. All this information should be in your MMRP. And if it's not, then I'm going to say you don't have enough evidence to support a decision on the project. And you need to, say, go back and fix it.
And your conditions of approval would say, you know, implement the MMRP, implement the requirements as specified in the MMRP.
Right.
Thank you. So we are about halfway through our time. And I'm looking at the material in front of us. I believe the last section on the new law, we're probably going to have to take that off the table tonight.
Okay.
And, but even with that, we're probably running about five to 10 minutes behind. So I just want to make sure we do have questions on this section and on others. So commissioners or council members, any questions on this? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mary. Yeah, just a real quick one on what we were just talking about. So when it comes to the MMRP, that's, the lead agency, the town, is sort of developing that, right? But can that, and maybe this is a half-question for the attorney, is the town determining its own, you know, the decision-making body says this is proportional? If the applicant disputes that, does that become a legal dispute? Is that the mitigation for that? Or how does that process work of determining proportionality and reasonableness?
Well, if it's a mitigated negative declaration, by definition, the applicant has agreed to all the requirements that's in that document. So that would have been negotiated before you even circulated it.
Right.
So clearly there, the applicant's on board. If it's an EIR and the lead agency's identifying mitigation that it believes should be applied and meets the nexus test and the applicant's not agreed to it, then the EIR would say this impact is significant and avoidable based upon the applicant's proposing and this mitigation measure is available for the council to consider imposing. But again, that still comes back to, is it constitutional? Is it going to satisfy the nexus requirements, yeah?
Okay, and then just a quick, so that then would go over to then leaving the realm of SEQA and back into sort of just what we do about builder's remedy and all these other things in front of us, okay?
I do want to point out real quickly, though, that SEQA does say, just because the developer doesn't want to do something, doesn't mean they get a free pass, right? SEQA says you have to implement all feasible and reasonable mitigation. So if there is mitigation available that, you know, is, fits the nexus, then they really don't have a reason to say no to it. And there's no reason why you should allow them to do that.
You have to find it's infeasible to not require it.
And very few things are infeasible. It was in an earlier slide, we didn't really touch on it. But mitigation's rarely infeasible. It's, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
It's just a matter of what they want to do.
I have just one question about thresholds. So you mentioned most jurisdictions use like the appendix G checklist. Is it an all or nothing if you, if a, like if the town wanted to adopt some of their own thresholds? Is it like you can just do one specific or you have to do the whole, all of the thresholds?
You can adopt thresholds for any resource section you want. It doesn't have to be an all or nothing approach.
Okay, so we could like add more on potentially or, okay. Is that, and that's, okay, thank you.
Like, for instance, your general plan has noise policies, noise guidelines for different land uses. Those are the thresholds I would think that you would apply for a given project.
Okay.
So you do have them for some.
So we have them for some things. It's just, but if it's not specific.
Or for VMT. You're evaluating projects now under VMT. You apply some thresholds that make sense for your town, where it's located and how it functions, yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
Other questions? Okay.
Okay, we'll try to move faster. Okay, so levels of review. So there are three basic options, right? So the first is the lead agency looks to see, does the project qualify for an exemption? And there's really two types of exemptions. Again, Shannon's going to cover those later, but real briefly, there's a statutory exemption, right? There's a number of types of activities that the legislature said are exempt by statute. So regardless where they're located, regardless where they have effects, if they are one of those statutory exemptions, the law just doesn't apply, right? So we look to see, is it statutorily exempt? And then if it's not, we look to see, does it fit within one of what are called categorical exemptions? And there are 34 of those. And they're classes of projects that the legislature and the state agency implementing SEQA have determined typically don't result in significant effects. You know, building a house, replacing an existing commercial structure with one that's pretty much the same size because it was damaged in a fire, replacement or reconstruction, right? There's a bunch of them that are categorical exemptions, but they can be overcome based upon circumstances, and we'll get into that. And then, so if a project isn't statutory or categorically exempt, it gets put into a more expansive process called an initial study, which is the appendix G that we talked about, right? Answering 20 different topics, you know, all the different environmental resources you could think of, right? Agriculture, noise, hydrology, you know, there's 20 of them, right? And if the effects of the project are less than significant or can be reduced to less than significant mitigation, then you get what's called a, either a negative declaration if there's no effects, or mitigated negative declaration if the effects can be mitigated. And negative declaration means no impacts, right? That's where we're getting no significant effects.
I don't think I've ever written one of those.
Oh, there's a few. I've had a couple.
It's called a categorical exemption.
General Plan amendments, the General Plan amendments that don't have impacts, yeah. And then the last category, which is the most expansive form of SEQA, and the courts, the courts have interpreted SEQA to favor EIRs when there's a question about whether a project has significant effects. And Shannon will talk about what's called a fair argument in a few slides. But the last category is an environmental impact report, and it's the most exhaustive, expansive form of the law. And then, so here's, this next slide's the decision tree. So again, you can see first, again, is it a project under SEQA, meaning physical change in the environment, right? And a public agency has a decision to make. Is the project ministerial? Again, it's a building permit, or it's a grading permit, or in San Jose, a single-family house that meets certain criteria, you just get a building permit. You don't have to go through a discretionary permit, right? So certain actions based upon, again, the framework of that particular agency's regulatory process are ministerial. So if it's ministerial, you don't have discretion by definition, right? So it's not subject to SEQA, right? So you're done. Ministerial projects are statutorily exempt. If it is a project, you have discretion, but it fits within one of the categories, again, it's either statutorily exempt or it's categorically exempt, then it's exempt. If it doesn't, and oh, in that case, you prepare what's called a notice of exemption that gets filed with the county, and it starts the statute of limitations. If the project has significant effects but can be mitigated, again, the decision tree puts you into the initial study mitigated negative declaration process. Or lastly, again, if you have significant effects that can't be avoided, they're going to be, regardless of mitigation, you still are just producing too much pollution, or it's too noisy, or whatever the case may be, you're demolishing an airplace or resource, you're into an environmental impact report. All right, so here, okay, the scope of the analysis. So the scope of the analysis takes into account how large the project is, how much traffic it produces, how much water requires, how much air pollution it emits, and also where it's located, what's on and around the property, what's sensitive about that environment. So projects that don't generate that much traffic, you wouldn't do a VMT study, right? Projects that don't emit, they're not large enough to emit a certain amount of air pollution, you wouldn't do a noise study, right? So the analysis is very much responding to the scale of the project, the nature of the project, and where it's going to occur. So it's very much contextual. Consistency with land use destinations is an important factor in determining the scope of the analysis, right? So if something is consistent with the general plan, then that means some analysis has already occurred about development on that site in the general plan EIR. So when something is inconsistent with the general plan, right? General Plan amendment, builder's remedy, whatever it is, it's not covered by all of the analysis of things like community-wide water supply, or community-wide wastewater generation, or maybe greenhouse gas emissions, things that you would do at a community scale, right? Those wouldn't be covered because by definition, the project is outside of that framework. So there, again, the scope of the analysis is going to take into account that project's individual contribution, because you can't just fall back on, you know, the water supply assessment that you did for your general plan. The baseline, again, will also dictate what technical reports are needed to understand the circumstances. Again, you might need to do a hazardous materials report because the site used to be a gas station, or you might need to do an archaeological report because the site is near a water course and could have been a Native American habitation site in the past, right? So it's very much contextual.
So how do we know when an EIR needs to be prepared? Sometimes it's by statute. So SEQA says, in certain circumstances, you have to prepare an EIR. By circumstance, as we talked about, if you have significant unavoidable impacts, you have to do an EIR. If there's concern about a fair argument standard, which we will get into, you would do an EIR. Or by choice. It seems odd, but there are private development projects where the developer says, I know I qualify for an initial study, but I want to do an EIR anyway, and there's reasons for that.
Publications, you could choose to do an EIR too, just because they're worried about controversy, or they wanted to provide the most, afford the public with the most participation possible.
Right. So I don't know how much you're aware of the fair argument, but basically what it says is it applies to an initial study. And it says that if it can be fairly argued based on substantial evidence that the project would have a significant impact, then you should be doing an EIR. And that is evidence from anybody who wants to produce it in front of a court. And sometimes the courts are very amenable to any evidence that people want to show them. So it's something that, to be considered.
It's a real little bar, so just real quick, an example, you know, specific to this town, you know, 15 years ago, 20 years ago, Netflix was going through an expansion, and they were, the town was processing an initial study mitigated negative declaration. This was back in the old days when traffic congestion was an impact. There was a traffic study, it studied effects on Stevens Creek Boulevard, and found they were going to be fine. A person who didn't want the project, thought it was going to be too much, introduced their own personal observations of how difficult it was to make turns on some of the intersections. A court found that substantial evidence and invalidated the MND. And so ultimately, you had to do an EIR. And in that EIR, you didn't have to agree with that person's opinion. You could still fall back on the traffic reports conclusions, because you're not subject to the fair argument. But ultimately, that project had to do an EIR.
Yeah, an EIR can have what they call disagreement among experts. So even if someone does bring substantial evidence by another expert that conflicts with what the lead agency has determined to be their conclusion, so long as you have evidence to support it, the courts are typically deferential, and you can choose which conclusion you want to, that you believe is correct. So even if there's a counterargument, it's not, it doesn't matter in an EIR.
Like, there could be competing opinions about whether a building's historic or not.
Right.
And the lead agency gets to decide which opinion is conclusive for its purposes in that document.
So just real quick, in terms of the courts and, you know, how things are looked at, so substantial evidence, what documents are covered by substantial evidence? Those are exemptions, those are environmental impact reports, and those are addendum to environmental impact reports. So if you have an EIR, project comes in that's, you know, tearing off of that, you do an addendum, that's under, afforded the same protection as the primary document, the EIR. Fair arguments apply to negative declarations, mitigated negative declarations, and addendums to negative declarations. So just understanding where the legal risk lies, EIRs are always going to be a better option for you. And interestingly enough, categorical exemptions are more legally defensible than an initial study. I'll figure.
There's no fair argument standard for exemptions.
Oh, this is me. Okay. So what is substantial evidence? Because I keep talking about it. It's facts. It's reasonable presumption predicated on facts, and it's expert opinion supported by facts. What it isn't is, it isn't an argument. It cannot be speculation. SEQA actually has a statute that says you can't be speculative. It's not unsubstantiated opinion or narrative, clearly inaccurate or erroneous information. You see this in comment letters that are just attacking for, you know, whatever reason, you'll see misinformation. And it can't be socioeconomic impacts not linked to a physical effect on the environment. Unfortunately, we don't have environmental justice in SEQA. It's only, well, it's not even in NEPA anymore, but we'd like to see it in SEQA, but it's not there yet. So we have to limit socioeconomic impacts to physical effects on the environment.
NEPA is the National Environmental Policy Act.
Sorry.
So it's the federal equivalent. It was passed in '69, and it governs federal agency actions, just like the cousin to SEQA. Federal projects, yeah. Okay, so initial study versus EIR. So an initial study is often, but not always, less expensive and faster than an EIR. We would do the same traffic study, we would do the same air quality study, noise, all the technical reports would be the same. So in terms of, you know, your analysis of a given topic, you know, noise, cultural resources, it will look the same in the initial study versus EIR. So the meat of the document is essentially the same. What's different about the EIR is that it will include a range of alternatives, right? And so we'll get in, we have a slide of alternatives, so I'll save some of that. But that's the main difference, is that the alternative section will cause it to be a longer document. There's also more procedural requirements. You have to go through a notice of preparation for an EIR, you have to hold a scoping meeting for an EIR, there's just more consultation that's involved. The public review period is longer, so EIR circulate for 45 days at minimum. Initial study MND will go for 20 typically, or if there's a state agency who has a role to play in the project, like CDFW, right, or the State Department Talks of Substance Control, it's a 30-day review. So there's differences in terms of, again, the review process, but as far as like the actual substance of what you would read about any given topic, it's going to be the same between the two documents. Other than, again, alternatives is something that you have to discuss in EIR that you wouldn't in a mitigated negative declaration. The asterisk on this slide, it's intended to convey that it's typically an applicant who elects to prepare an EIR when an ISMND would suffice on substance. Again, given a lead agency is supposed to require the appropriate amount of SEQA review based on the project's impacts, and requiring an EIR when a project has no significant effects, significant avoidable, would be an excessive application of the act, right? So typically, it's, you know, an applicant will say, I'm worried about this getting sued. Lead agency, let's just do an EIR. Like Costco is an example. Every Costco I've worked on, corporate philosophy, we're doing an EIR. We don't care where we're located or what the effects are, we're just going to do an EIR. And cities will go along because, okay, I mean, if that's what you want, we'll do it. But it would be inappropriate for the lead agency to tell Costco, yeah, we've looked at all your project impacts, there's nothing significant here, but we're going to put you through an EIR anyway. And actually, under, as a law passed in the last few years, AB 1633, housing projects can sue if they're being put through excessive SEQA processes. But again, a housing developer could elect to do an EIR if they were worried about a challenge by opponents. All right, so why do an EIR if an initial study is warranted? Again, this comes back to that risk management question. So as Shannon mentioned, again, EIRs are subject to the substantial evidence test, where you can have a disagreement with experts. Courts are going to be deferential, they're just going to make sure, are all the conclusions in the EIR supported by some sort of substantial evidence, right? Versus the MND, fair argument, again, the Netflix expansion was overturned because of one guy's observations of turning movements on Stevens Creek, right? So those are just two very different standards of review. And so again, typically, a project applicant will choose to do an EIR even when one's not required, because they just don't want to get down the process and, six months later, a year later, find out they have to do an EIR because the fair argument pops into the record. Again, an EIR, though, typically comes with some additional cost and timing. So I mentioned procedurally, there's more steps. In terms of cost, there's more work for consulting, because we have to do some additional work. So the question is, why not just do an EIR all the time? And my answer to that is, well, so I was presenting a few years ago at the San Francisco Bar with a prominent SEQA attorney. She defends private developers. And her perspective was, never do an initial study MND, they're just a complete waste of time. And I was like, why? I mean, again, just from a practitioner's standpoint, you know, I've probably worked on, I don't know, 500 initial study MNDs in my career. One of them had a fair argument challenge that required an EIR, and I actually didn't work on the initial study, I came in and did the EIR after the fact. But there's so many projects that I've worked on over the years, that they're not going to get sued, and on substance, they qualify. And so just as like a cost to society, it's stupid to be doing an excessive process over and over and over again. The time and the money is just not warranted. So it really should be a case-by-case decision, and in my view, and as a consultant, we get paid to write EIRs, but it's just a waste of time and money.
It's better to follow the process, the laws that's laid out, and not do anything excessive.
Yeah, so it's risk management.
Okay, we're going to talk about exemptions real quick. As Akoni mentioned, there is a substantial number of exemptions that can apply. The most common one, if you see any coming through, most likely, it's a Class 32, that's an infill exemption. And in order for an infill exemption to apply, it has to be consistent with the general plan and the zoning, it has to be within the jurisdiction's limits, and cannot be larger than five acres. It cannot have any value as habitat for endangered, rare, or threatened species. Approval would not result in significant impacts to traffic, noise, air quality, or water quality, and the site can be adequately served by all utilities and public services. So it truly is infill development on a brownfield site, that's what they're talking about here. And we're seeing a lot more of these now. A lot more projects are qualifying for categorical exemptions than they used to. It's becoming very commonplace to prepare these. So other common exemptions that you might see, so Class 1 is existing facilities, and that's just repair, maintenance, or minor alteration to existing facilities. It's, you know, it's very limited, there's no measurable impacts. Class 2 is replacement or reconstruction. Akoni alluded to this, you know, if a building burns down and they build basically the same thing. Or Class 3, new construction or conversion of small structures, and that's up to six dwelling units, or commercial use is up to 10,000 square feet. So very limited.
I think it's three detached and six attached.
Yes.
So not a six-unit subdivision, but a three-unit subdivision or a six-unit apartment project or townhouse project.
Right. Now, if something qualifies for an exemption, it's not just a, great, you're golden. There's exceptions to the exemptions. This is where the fun part of the law gets into play. You can meet all the requirements, but then if you, if you can't meet all the exceptions, then you still can't do the, if you can't meet all the exceptions, you can't do the exemption.
If one or more of the exceptions is present.
Yes. I'll get it correct. Little tongue-tied. You can't have cumulative impacts. You can't have significant impacts due to unusual circumstances, right? If it's a pretty standard run-of-the-mill impact, like every project's going to have some air quality emissions from construction, right? That's not unusual, but there could be unusual circumstances, like, I don't know, you have known archaeological resources that are very unique to just that site, right? That would be an unusual circumstance. You can't have damage to scenic highways. Most cities, this doesn't apply, but you guys actually have a designated scenic highway, so it does apply to you in certain circumstances. You can't be lodicated on a hazardous waste site, which negates a lot of things in the county. And then you cannot have an adverse change to a historic resource. So all of these things, if you hit any of these typically, you can't do the exemption. And we're ready for questions.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shorty?
Yeah, just a quick follow-up on the lead agency and the tendency to be cautious. So if the lead agency owns the document, which I think it's their document, even though the developer might pay to prepare it, aren't they subject to the downside of damages if something goes wrong?
Well, the document's supposed to represent the independent judgment and analysis of the lead agency, right? So regardless who wrote it, if we wrote it or somebody else, it's ultimately, you know, the town staff, and then they're bringing it to you to certify, right? So it's the lead agency's document, right? And as far as like damages, I mean, if there's a real party in interest, you know, then they're the ones whose project is at risk, right? So they're, they're not going to get to build their project. If it's a city project, or a town project, then, you know, you might not get to build some piece of needed infrastructure, or whatever the case may be. And then as far as if the lead agency is the, you know, losing party in litigation, there might be attorney's fees that get paid, I don't know, Gabriel would know better than me.
So if there's an unforeseen impact that affects the community, it's the developer or the applicant that's going to end up paying the damages if something...
What damages are...
Well, if you're referring to like a challenge to a project approval, the town has a standard indemnification clause that requires the applicant to indemnify the town, so they would pay the attorney fees and any award of damages.
Okay, so there's no real reason for the town to be excessively cautious, I guess, financially, huh? Okay, thank you.
You'd be cautious because you're worried about the standard of review for the document. You know, you're just worried about defending an MND in a litigation, so you'd be cautious to have the better standard of review of substantial evidence for the EIR. You're more likely to win.
Thank you.
Commissioner Burge?
I would like to understand, the site can be adequately served by all required utilities and public services.
Uh huh.
And I'm specifically asking about this because we know that right now with a lot of the projects going on, we don't have adequate power to supply many of these. So what does can be actually mean? Right, or, yeah, is the town responsible for making sure that there's adequate utilities with the developer, or is it just...
Well, the lead agency would need to make a finding that, you know, there was adequate water, or sewer, or storm drain capacity, or whatever the utilities were to that site, that, I mean, that's part of the normal review of a project, independent of SEQA, right? I mean, the city's not, the town's not going to issue a permit for something if there isn't water available, or the storm drain capacity is insufficient or whatever. So those are things that would normally be reviewed. So for the purposes of that exemption, that would be something that, you know, we'd be looking to the public work staff, or the private civil engineer who's working on the project to produce studies to show that there's, there is adequate capacity in the lines, or that the project's going to be providing, you know, its own infrastructure. So it's a finding you need to make, and the substantial evidence is going to be whatever engineering studies are being prepared for the project.
Right, but it wouldn't be your responsibility to like extend lines to support a private development project.
Okay.
It would be their responsibility to do that, and that would be encompassed within the scope of the project description.
Yeah, so if we said, again, that the nearest available water line was three blocks away, then we'd say, well, the project would need to extend that line. And so like Shannon said, we would account for that construction activity as a part of the effects of the project.
Okay, that makes sense. Assuming you had enough water supply to actually put water in that line.
Precisely.
I had a quick follow-up on that. What if there were mandatory water reductions?
If there's a, again, that's independent of SEQA, right? So I'd say if I was reviewing a project in your jurisdiction, and you told me that there's a mandatory water reduction in your town code, then in calculating the demand for that project, we would take that into account. We'd say, you know, and what does a project normally require within that water retail or service area? Certain amount per day, per capita, whatever. But it sounds like, you know, there's some additional restrictions that will apply. Are they temporary? Are they going to sunset in some particular year? Are they based upon a drought declaration? I mean, we'd have to see what the, what the effect of that was, whether it was temporary or permanent, and then that would be something we would disclose in terms of the net water demand associated with the project. But the baseline would matter too, right? Again, is the site a car wash today? Uses a lot of water, maybe? Or maybe not? Maybe it's farming, yeah.
Right. Typically, we base it off the urban water management plan.
Commissioner Burnett?
Yes, and thank you for coming tonight. So a question, is there a timeline for the town to, if they want to tighten up their discretion, discretion issues, you know, toughen up some things, like before projects come before the planning commission, town council? Can we toughen up some of these issues? Is there a timeline that we've had to have them done by us, you know?
I mean, what you're asking is a question that really is not mandated by the SEQA Act itself. It's, I mean, you should be evaluating projects when they're filed and deemed complete according to the regulatory framework you have at the time. And if you are, you know, looking to change things going forward, then I think it's a question about, you know, what's fair in terms of sort of grandfathering projects that are already in line, and how you would apply, you know, future perspective changes, that those should only apply, I would think, to things that are filed after those changes take effect. But again, that's not really something that the Act governs, it's really a matter of, that's not really something that the Act governs. It's really a matter of, you know, how do you, how does the town deal with, you know, upcoming changes to your regulatory process, and how do you decide when to apply them?
But you can make those changes at any time. There's, there's no like, you know, timeframe within CEQA where you can, where you're limited to do that.
Thank you. And then outside of CEQA, an important consideration is whether or not it's a Senate Bill 330 project, and that was the bill that allowed applicants to submit preliminary applications. And once that was done, the applications vested to the standards that were in place at the time the preliminary application was submitted.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Risto?
Thank you, and thank you for this presentation. Could you just give a couple examples or delve into what you mean by cumulative impacts, when you said you can't have the following exceptions? I mean, what are examples?
So we have slides that are coming.
We have slides back, yeah.
Yeah, we'll get into that in more detail.
Never mind.
Yeah. So we would just point out that one of the things that disqualifies a project from being exempt is if it can be shown it contributes to cumulative effects. But we'll cover cumulative in the next slide.
Yeah, I think we're gonna have questions on cumulative and on tiering. So, tiering, I think, is the next section.
You get into it?
I'm sorry, one more. Commissioner Barnett?
Yeah. On the decision tree, where does a negative, mitigated negative declaration fit?
If it's not exempt, and you go to the no, then you say, would the project have significant unavoidable impacts? If that's no, then that's your initial study MND.
Yeah, so the, the three letters MND are missing there, but initial study is, is what we mean there by the mitigated negative declaration.
Oh, I see. Okay, that's helpful.
I had limited space. Sorry.
Thank you. Okay, tiering?
Okay, so, yeah, so tiering, so, again, tiering refers to coverage of general matters in a broad IR, like your general plan IR, or a specific plan, which narrows subsequent environments review for individual projects. And, so use an example, right? So if you go through a general plan update process, right, as a part of that, you're gonna look at water supply for the, for that community for the next 20 years, taking into account all the growth and change that's in the general plan, right? So you'll work with the water retailer. If it's not you, you'll come up with a water supply assessment, and you'll, your land use document and the water supply assessment are gonna look out 20 years. So future projects that are consistent with your general plan, they're consistent with the residential density, or the commercial floor ratio requirements, or whatever, there's not a need, when that individual project comes in, to reassess its effect on water supply anymore, because we've already addressed it in the general plan, in the, in the water supply assessment for the general plan. So that's, that's an example of tiering, or other things like greenhouse gas emissions. Again, if you look at community-wide greenhouse gas emissions in your general plan, you come up with a climate action plan, or GHG production strategy to deal with them. Future individual projects that are consistent with your general plan, and they implement all the applicable requirements in your climate action plan, they're done. There, there's not a need to calculate their emissions again. They've already been considered as part of a larger analysis. So that's tiering. Tiering wouldn't work if a project was inconsistent with the general plan. It's a general plan amendment, or it's a bill that's remedied. By definition, it's outside of the analysis you've already done. So you wouldn't be able to tier water supply, as an example, right? Okay, so this particular section, 15186, again, it talks about program documents, right? Program-level IRs, program meaning a policy-level document, right? A general plan, a specific plan, something like that, where you're not looking at individual sites, individual projects, you're looking at a larger area, or the whole community over a long period of time. And so this is, you know, this touches on issues I was covering in the prior slide, where we can say that the general plan IR adequately addressed certain topics, like greenhouse gas emissions, or water demand, or wastewater. Again, how much wastewater is generated by the community, and is there capacity to treat it? Or are the pipes large enough to convey to the treatment plant, right? Roadway noise, where we studied the combined effect of all the future traffic, and how much traffic it's gonna, it's gonna put on roadways, the roadway volumes, to what extent are they increasing? Will it be so noisy that it exceeds thresholds, right? Farmland conversion, right? You're gonna convert farmland when you decide in the general plan to change it from ag to housing. The future individual project for 12 units, you've already made the decision, right? So tiering, ag impacts is a typical thing. But site-specific issues that you couldn't address at the scale of a general plan IR, those are not subject to tiering, right? Things like specific cultural resources on a site, or biological resources on a site, right? Those are things, or hazmat, right? Things like that. You, you couldn't look at them at a, at the, at a program level, at a community scale level. So those are things that, again, you would not tier. Let's see what else. Yeah, they're, they're just site-specific, and time-specific, and design-specific. Okay, so now we're gonna turn to another section, another form of tiering, and this is guideline section 15183. It's become a very popular form of statutory exemption. It's a, it's a type of statutory exemption, and it's referred to as the community plan exemption. And so, again, it creates a streamlined process for projects that are consistent with existing zoning, a community plan, or the general plan for which an IR was prepared. That's a key criterion, right? If you somehow adopted this long-range plan through a mitigated negative declaration, you can't use 15183. But it's pretty rare to do that. There are some instances. I'm aware of some, like downtown plans in some jurisdictions on the peninsula, they're covered by MNDs. But most cases, a long-range plan for a community, general plan or otherwise, is gonna be covered by an IR. And so therefore, section 15183 is something you'll see applicants asking for repeatedly. It's, it's popping up. It's, it's a common thing. And it's an important tiering and streamlining process option for projects that are consistent with the general plan, or specific plan, or zoning, and when there was an IR. So it's intended for projects that will result in environmental effects that the council has already determined are acceptable, right? So they approved the general plan. They made findings based upon the IR, but all the general plan's impacts, right? In some cases saying that they were significant and avoidable, and accepting them through the override process, right? So it's, but through the 15183 process, projects are evaluated to see, will they result in the same level of impact that the general plan IR concluded? Again, there's cases where it could be significant and avoidable, like for vehicle miles traveled, right? Again, if you found that the parts of the town that are nowhere near transits, the trips are long, there's just no way to mitigate that, right? So a future project coming forward at 15183, it's consistent with the general plan designation, its VMT's gonna be high, but that's not news. You've already said that those parts of your town are gonna be significant and avoidable, right? So 15183 is not typically a process for projects that involve significant impacts to things like historic resources, or biological resources, because the general plan IR typically would find the impacts of those resources are gonna be mitigated down the line, right? We would, we would say, historic buildings, preserve them, adapt it or reuse them, conform to the Secretary of Interior standards, or biological effects, mitigate, get credits, whatever. So it's, it's rare that at a program level, at a general plan level, you would override and accept impacts of historic resources or biological effects. Let's see. To, to use 15183, an agency is supposed to apply uniformly applied development standards. So things like stormwater controls for water quality during construction, or transportation demand management measures for vehicle miles traveled, right? So if a project requires a mitigation measure that's unique to its circumstances, or the agency does not have a standard condition of approval, or a MUNI code requirement to address an issue, then that should preclude the use of 15183. Because again, you're supposed to apply uniformly applied development requirements. So this is a case where our company, again, we assist agencies around the Bay Area, we're working for several public agencies right now to come up with a set of uniformly applied development standards that they can apply to projects. They'll put them in their MUNI code, or other regulatory framework policies, and they therefore will have a sound basis to use 15183. Yeah, again, as a form of, I will point out, as a form of an exemption, right, this is a statutory exemption. Projects covered under 15183, they're not subject to a formal public review period, right? They don't circulate like a mitigated negative declaration or IR. They're not subject to tribal consultation, like AB 52. And, but the, the analysis, you know, it is available to the public in the project's administrative file, like the plans. It's gonna be part of the packets when it goes to hearing, and it's provided obviously to decision-makers for the information, but it just, the 15183 process, like all exemptions really, they don't facilitate public participation like the more expansive documents like an MND or IR, because again, they don't circulate for public review. There's not a comment-response process that's, that's built into the process.
Okay.
You know, since we're getting, we finished the tiering slides, I wanted to see if there were any questions on tiering before we moved on. Commissioner Stump?
Gonna be a comment, plus a couple of questions that we may not be able to address tonight, or have time to address tonight. We all got a desk item today that came from the Los Gatos Community Alliance, you know, voice of the community. They submitted this item, requesting the town include a focus discussion, which we don't have time for that tonight, on the legal status and continued applicability of the 2040 General Plan Environmental Impact Report, the program IR, that was certified back on June 30th of 2022, and the town's ongoing legal obligations under CEQA to analyze cumulative environmental effects. We've talked about this many times in Planning Commission, and I'm sure at the council level too. It's asking questions about the legal status and applicability of our 2040 General Plan Program IR, and asserts the town has ongoing legal obligation under CEQA to analyze cumulative environmental effects. So what new substantial information or circumstances arisen since certification of our IR back in 2022? And I just wanna give you this list, because it's important for us to hear this. The town council rescinded the land use and community design elements of the 2040 General Plan on April 2nd, 2024, reverting to the 2020 General Plan for these policy areas. 15 SB 330 applications were filed under the Housing Accountability Act. Many projects proposed significantly higher densities than permitted or studied. Eight of 15 projects have densities ranging from 59 DUA to 225 DUA. Eight of the 15 projects are located on non-housing element site inventory parcels, and were not evaluated in the 2040 General Plan IR. Nine multi-story projects between four to 13 stories had building heights beyond what was studied in the General Plan IR. Five projects from four to nine stories are heavily concentrated on Los Gatos Boulevard. Four of the six projects ranged from 62 DUA to 132 DUA, and the housing element overlay zone approved in December 2023 increased housing maximum density range from 30 DUA to 40 DUA for properties subject to the North 40 specific plan. And, and what I'm just wanting to bring up tonight, there are two questions that are asked by the Community Alliance in this document, and I think it's in our best interest to make sure that those questions are answered. And so I'm not gonna throw those out here, because we don't even have time to discuss them, but they are a part of the desk item.
Yeah. So I have a, kind of a simple follow-on to that, and that is, if an IR was based on a general plan element that was rescinded, how can that IR be seen as based on existing zoning, community plan, or general plan policy?
For some projects, the town is relying on the IR because the housing element relied on that IR. And so the town is considering whether projects are consistent with the density was, that was described in that housing element.
So, the housing element relied on the 2040 IR. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And if the 2040 IR was based on housing elements, or elements of the general plan that were rescinded, how, and I'm looking at the language here, that it says that it has to be based on existing community plan or general plan policies. So I would be interested in the consultant's view on whether a rescinded element is considered an existing policy?
I, I very specifically can't give you any direct feedback on your general plan IR and the actions you've taken, because I've not read it, and I'm not familiar with the history that leads up to where you are today. I will say, an IR studies the implementation of a project as it's defined at the time. So that IR, that's certified, studied the full effect of implementing the general plan as it was proposed back in 2023, or whenever the action was. Whether you chose to implement some or all of that project, the IR's analysis of the build-out condition is still good. It still takes into account the full effect of implementing the project as it was proposed back then.
And so, some things like heights or densities that were not studied, but are part of some of the projects, I would assume that those would need additional studies, correct?
Well, as I mentioned on the, the tiering slide, to the extent a project is not consistent with the general plan, then the general plan IR's analysis of that project could not be tiered, right? If the density's different than the water demand, for instance, of, of the project that comes forward, you couldn't say was covered in the water supply assessment, because the assumptions for that site would have been different than what the current project proposes.
Okay. Other question? I think there may be some on cumulative, so hopefully we'll have a little bit of time to get to that part.
Okay, we'll go through this pretty quickly. So, public review is a key component of CEQA. As was mentioned before, it's an informational document, and so public process is critical to the law being, that's what it's intended to do, is to inform the public and have them be, and participate. So, we have public review periods for both MNDs and IRs. And for an IR, that's the only document where you have a formal requirement to provide written responses to comments, on comments received during the public review period. If we get comments on an MND, we usually prepare a memo as well for that to respond. We do like to educate the public. We take that very seriously. We're only required, though, to address comments specifically about the environmental analysis. And most of the comments we get don't pertain to that. They pertain to the project, and we don't like the project, and why are you doing this, and why are you doing that? Technically, we can just say comment noted on those and move on, but again, we try to provide whatever information that we can that's helpful.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Just on the, on the subject of responding to MNDs, because the MND is subject to the fair argument standard, whenever we get comments in an MND, we go out of our way to explain in the memo why nothing that has been said in the comment constitutes a fair argument. We wanna bend over backwards to try to put as much in the record as possible, so if it ultimately get litigated, the judge could see.
Yeah.
There's no fair argument here.
Yeah, thank you. So public comments can come, oops, there we go. At various times, we hope that they come during the public comment period, but as I'm sure you know, they can come at hearings as well, right? We can get new information. They can be, they should be addressed on the spot by staff or your CEQA consultant, if possible. If it's not possible to address them then, then it's perfectly reasonable to continue the project, right? Do the research, have the record be as clean and accurate as possible, right? Give people time to find the answer and come back. It's not, no project's just gonna wither away because they have to wait for one more meeting, right, for us to get the right answers.
But you don't wanna reward bad behavior here, though, also. You don't want
Yes.
people to be submitting late comments just to get the project continued to the next hearing, and then do it again, and again, and again, right? I mean,
Right.
you don't, don't reward bad behavior that way.
Yeah, so, and that's it, late hits. We don't like them. We get them all the time. You get that comment letter at 4:30 in the afternoon, and we're scrambling to try to help staff respond to it, so they can at least read into the record a response to that, to that comment.
I would just wanted to announce that I'd like to go another eight minutes, if you don't mind sticking around, so that
Of course.
perhaps we can get to the cumulative impact.
Yeah, absolutely.
We'll stay as long as you want us to. You have other business to take up.
We're happy to stay. So that's all I need to say on public comments. We'll move on. Okay.
Okay, and just moving along, so as I mentioned before, when a project's subject to an IR, right, the guidelines say that the lead agency needs to make findings about all of the significant effects of the project, right? So this is where the decision's being made. So the IR exists for your information. You, as the decision-makers, then have to adopt a set of findings. So you need to make a finding about all of the significant effects of the project, whether they've been mitigated by mitigation measures that are incorporated in the project, or that you, as the lead agency, will impose, or another public agency, right? And you need to find if there are any effects that are significant and unavoidable, that are just not subject to reduction through mitigation, that are just a unfortunate, unattended negative consequence of the project you can't avoid.
Like demolition of a historic building.
Yeah.
There's no way to mitigate that.
Or the project is so big, it's just gonna produce more air pollution than the air district says should be significant. It's just a big project, right? There's nothing bad about it, it's just the amount of traffic it's gonna produce is tailpipe emissions. So in that case, the lead agency decision-maker is required to go on record and adopt what's called a statement of overriding consideration. So again, this is where, as the decision-makers, you're telling the public that you represent why you're still approving this project despite its significant effects. What is it about the benefits of the project? Again, is it providing much-needed housing for your community? Is it providing employment opportunities? Is it providing sales tax revenue to support your general fund? That whatever, or maybe it's a piece of infrastructure that is really needed, it's gonna have some localized effects, but at a community-wide level, you really need it. So again, this is where you go on record as to why you're still proceeding to approve the project despite all its effects.
Okay, and then for approvals, those are decisions made by the lead agency, right, to consider the environmental effects of the proposed projects. This is something that we feel very strongly about. Approval of the CEQA document and approval of the project should be two separate actions. A lot of cities like to merge those together, but there's two separate questions, right? The only question on the environmental analysis is, is it adequate? Is it legally adequate? If you can say yes, then you should approve that environmental document. Whether or not you're gonna approve the project, that's a completely separate question, right? And one of the main reasons for doing that is if the project doesn't get approved, but then they come back with a modified project, that environmental document that you approved, we can tier off of that. We can utilize that. We can use that information. If you don't approve the environmental document, it's worthless to us. All that work just went away. So it really is two separate questions. I can't stress that enough, to please consider them separately.
There are supposed to be separate actions on the general.
Yes.
I just wanna point out the unique role of the council as the local elected decision-making body for the town of Los Gatos, right? So CEQA says that if a decision for a project is delegated to somebody else, Planning Commission, Community Development Director, Public Works Director, right, if somebody else other than the elected decision-making body is in a role of deciding whether to approve or carry out the project and the related CEQA document, CEQA requires that there has to be an appeal to the local elected decision-making body, board supervisors, town council, whatever it may be. And that's because, again, you guys represent the community, and you're supposed to uphold the quality, environmental qualities that that community finds important. So there's really two key roles. So as Shannon mentioned, you first need to find whether the CEQA document is adequate. Again, is it serving your purposes? Do you understand what it's telling you? Is the public informed? Can they participate? And then secondly, if you're gonna approve the project despite the environmental effects, And then secondly, if you're going to approve the project despite the environmental effects, again, why you're doing that, statement of overriding considerations. But again, if somebody else has been delegated that authority in your organization, you stand as the final arbiter, right? There has to be an opportunity to appeal to you so that you can be the final word on it for the city's administrative process for that project. And then once you've acted at that point, and the opponents out there have exhausted administrative remedies, that's when they can then go to a court. But until they've got to the final decision-making body, you can't sue. So anyway, the council, again, you ultimately represent the community, and the community's expecting you to uphold the values, the environmental qualities that are important to that community. The point of it being a, it's an act intending to support and inform self-government.
Okay, so beware of the pitfalls of SEQA. Paperwork is not the intent, right? We don't get paid by the letter or the word. We like to be concise, so we're not trying to write large documents. The intent is to identify ways to reduce or avoid environmental damage. Speculative analysis is not allowed, right? We've talked about that. Analysis needs to focus on those thresholds. It needs to be adequate but not exhaustive, right? You just need to show your best effort, but you don't have to cover every little nuance of every little thing. Disclosure is the purpose of SEQA. It's just to inform decision-makers. That's the whole intent of what we do. Analysis is not covered under SEQA, economics. We can't talk about economics unless it's somehow
Walmart closes the downtown sale.
Yes, right. Subjects for which there is no clear environmental effect or established thresholds. You don't have those, then we can't talk about them.
EMF, if you guys have heard about EMF from, you know, that's a difficult one, yeah.
Yeah, that was a hot minute where we had that, but then it went away. This one is really critical. Assuming the analysis would find a different conclusion with an EIR instead of an initial study MND. Like Akoni mentioned, it's the exact same analysis. EIRs just have a little bit more window dressing, a little bit more process, but the analysis is the same, so you're not going to get any different conclusion with one document versus the other.
Real quick, on the mores, not better. Again, the document is supposed to be digestible to you and to the public. So if we're producing documents that are thousands of pages long, the attorneys will like it, because there's a lot in the record they can cite later, but you're not going to read it. It's too long, and it's going to be impenetrable to the decision-makers. So like one of our colleagues, he prides himself on writing the most succinct usable documents, and he's won awards for it. He's really good at it.
Yeah.
Because again, as a consumer of this information, you don't want to read 1,000 pages. 100 is better, right? Or even 10, yeah.
Yeah.
As long as it gives you what you need.
He won an award for an eight-page categorical exemption. Yeah, it was great.
Thank you. In getting to the last three or four minutes that we have,
Do you want us to skip over?
Yeah, if Councilmember Risto has a question about cumulative, and there may be others, so if you could cover that slide and then we could get some questions.
Slide 39.
There we go.
Okay, so cumulative is, it's a tricky one, I will say, in terms of being an SEQA prediction, right? So the point of cumulative analysis is that individual projects whose effects are limited, they're small, right? They can, when the number of them combined, still result in significant effects, right? So that's the point of it. A project on its own, not significant, but if you take into account the combined effect of 12 of them, it might begin to produce enough roadway noise, or it might begin to strain your water's capacity, wherever, right? So cumulative is a, it's a requirement under SEQA. All projects, right? Exemptions can be disqualified for it. Initial study MNDs still have to talk about, EIRs have to talk about. So it's a relevant topic for everything. And the way it works is you look at the effects of past projects, so things that maybe that you've approved and that have not been built, right? So they're not, you approved a subdivision or a gas station or whatever, but it's not got financing or it got slowed down by COVID or whatever, but it's still on the books. It could still happen. So you take into account things that you know you've said yes to, but having it appeared in the world, right? And then you look at what else is pending at the time you do your analysis. So if an application is filed in March of '25, you look to see, what else is pending? What else could we include in the analysis of this project? And then you look to see what's reasonably foreseeable, which is difficult, because for me to say that something's reasonably foreseeable, I need to know enough about it that we can include it in the analysis. Is it 20 units or 30? That could be, that could be a big difference, right? So it's, what have you said yes to but hasn't occurred? What's currently on file? And what can you really say meaningfully about things that are reasonably foreseeable? And so that's the, that's the framework. And then
May I just interject for a second? This is where that baseline really comes into question, right? So at what point in time do you put the pause button on it and say this is your baseline condition? Any projects that come in filed after that time, we can't really consider those, because then you're chasing that baseline and you're never going to finish the process. So those projects, we consider our project, right? Because they're coming after. So we're reasonably foreseeable, but we can't assume projects that come in after the start of the SEQA process.
Yeah, so the second bullet is getting at the point that cumulative analysis can be based upon either a list of projects, right? So you look to see, okay, I've got this site, what is going on in the vicinity that would be meaningful? So that's going to be the point in time analysis. Okay, the application's being reviewed in March of '25. What is the list of pending or approved projects that are in the vicinity of this? Or you can use projections of future conditions. So again, the downfall of the list of projects is, that's just a point in time. You're only capturing a fairly narrow window of time. If you use the projections of future conditions, that's where you can look out 20 years in your general plan. Again, what are the things are going to happen over time in terms of student population growth for schools, or growth in traffic, or other things, right? So there's two different ways to look at it, and in the same document, we will, for some topics, use the list approach, because it makes more sense. But for others, like water supply, wastewater treatment capacity, greenhouse gas emissions, things like that, air quality, we'll look at the projections of future conditions. So it's a hybrid approach, and it really depends upon the resource. And then, again, the, what is a cumulatively significant effect, right? The fact that a project is adding traffic to your roadways doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to cause a significant roadway noise effect, right? So there's a, there are cases interpreting this aspect of SEQA, and they're pretty interesting. The case that's out there says cumulatively considerable is not one molecule, right? The fact that you're putting one more molecule into the air isn't cumulatively considerable. Could be two. The court didn't say. They just said, well, it's not one. And so for something like air quality, what we look to there is, what does the air district say? And they do that based upon their Clean Air Plan for the whole Bay Area basin, and that Clean Air Plan's based upon the Clean Air Act standards for different air pollution in the Bay Area, right? So there's a framework that comes from the Federal Clean Air Act, gets translated down to the Bay Area's Clean Air Plan, and then the district puts out thresholds about what sort of future growth they've projected and what sort of emissions it will produce. So anyway, so whether something's cumulatively considerable is very much a decision you get to make for each project applying thresholds that you use.
Thank you. I wanted to get a couple of questions from council members or commissioners. Councilmember Risto, you had a question before about cumulative?
No, that was addressed.
It was addressed. Okay, great. Anyone else? Commissioner Stump?
Just wanted to ask about public comment. And maybe we've not bumped into this yet with our SB 330 projects, but I'm in a love hearing, which you say here that public comments received during a hearing should be addressed on the spot by staff or the SEQA consultant. And that's public comments. Is that the approach? I guess this is more of a staff question. Is that the approach we're going to be taking going forward?
I'll start, and then Community Development might have more comments, but if we get public comments in time, I think the goal will be to address those questions in the staff report. But if it's a question that's coming up at the hearing, then staff will need to address it at the hearing.
And I had one closing on cumulative. Would preliminary and final applications under builder's remedy in SB 330 be considered reasonably foreseeable?
I, you know, I'll let the attorney weigh in, but for us to evaluate them in a meaningful way, we would have to have good information about the project. Again, is it 52 units or is it 25, right? Is it going to demolish the historic resource on that site, or is it not going to? How many trees is it going to take out, right? So if the preliminary application is not giving you that definitive information, then